Meeting of MCCSC Board of This is not on, is it on now? Yeah, okay. Tonight, we honor the excellence of MCCSC's dedicated employees, students, and volunteers who make a difference in our school community. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, Board of School Trustees and community members. It's my pleasure to share this month's Excellence Spotlight, which is a feature of every regular Board of School Trustees meeting. It's a dedicated time to honor the excellence occurring every day through the dedication of MCCSC employees, students, and volunteers. MCCSC is honored to announce Lisa Snooks for the October Excellence Spotlight Award. Lisa is the Administrative Assistant at the MCCSC Adult Education Broadview Learning Center. Lisa is truly the heart of our program. She consistently greets staff, students, and families with warmth, kindness, and genuine care, creating a welcoming environment for all. Her dedication goes far beyond her daily responsibilities. She anticipates needs before they arise and ensures that everything runs smoothly behind the scenes. Lisa's unwavering commitment and positive spirit make a meaningful difference every single day. Her impact is felt by everyone who's had the privilege of working with her, and she exemplifies the excellence this award is meant to celebrate. Thank you, Lisa, for everything you do.
Thank you so much for that, um, that work on your behalf. And I was supposed to read, this whole thing was scripted for me, that I was supposed to read about us joining you and all this stuff, and I didn't read that, so apologies. So now, I know, it makes a lot of sense now. I'm like, oh, it was on me. So now it's time for public comments. We have two cards tonight. Just a reminder that for those who signed up to speak and acknowledge the guidelines, Mrs. Butcher will ring the bell once to signal that you have thirty seconds remaining for your comment, and five bells to signal that your time has concluded. We will begin with Joseph, and I cannot, the ink is sort of, maybe it's Shing?
Good evening, members of the MCCSC School Board. My name is Joseph Shing, and I'm a senior at the Academy. I'm here tonight as a concerned student who has personally experienced a deep systemic failure in our school system, a failure that undermines the very values MCCSC stands for. The school district's mission is to nurture and empower every student. I am here to tell you that for immigrant and refugee students like me, the current system is doing the exact opposite. When I first enrolled at Bloomington High School South as a sophomore, I was automatically placed into English New Letters, E&amp;L class for months, despite being fully proficient in English. I was also placed in Algebra I despite having a much stronger math background. It took months of self, it took months of persistent self-advocacy to be moved into courses that reflected my true academic level, and the process was unnecessarily difficult. Through this, through this experience and through conversations like with students like myself across Indiana's school districts, I learned that my story was not unique. Many students like myself are being misplaced into classes that don't reflect their true academic capability because a school admin decided that they are not academically capable. I believe that assuming someone's academic capability and level based on where they're from, their accent, their background, or country of origin is a form of discrimination. There are current MCCSC policies such as Policy 5410 and Policy 5463, which basically mandates that schools, that students be placed in classes that fit them. In practice, this was not implemented for my case. We can make all the rules we want, but they are meaningless if they're not being implemented. Therefore, tonight, I have two urgent requests for the Board. First, I request the creation of a clear, specific policy for new newly-enrolling immigrant and refugee students, as there currently isn't one. This policy will ensure they are properly, properly assessed in core subjects like English and math upon enrollment, so they are placed in the right classes that reflect their true academic capability from day one. My second request is for a system to ensure policies are followed. We need a system where all students can, can provide constructive feedback on their administrative experiences. This will create a collaboration between students and school administrators to work hand-in-hand with the district to identify loopholes, improve policy implementation, and strengthen the system for everyone. I truly hope that the School Board stands with me in this journey of making MCCSC a better place for every single student. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shing, for your courageous comments tonight. Next up, we have Darcy Fawcett.
Hello, my name is Darcy Fawcett, and I am here to draw attention to the fact that there is still a need for gymnastics coach at North as well as at South. My daughters go to North, so I'm here advocating for the School Board, any administrator, to advertise as aggressively as possible of the need for a gymnastics coach. Andrea Smith was the gymnastics coach. She has been that, she was the coach for over twenty years. During our season last year, she learned that due to her promotion to an administrator who's her hill, she would not be able to continue to coach. Even though it's getting close to a year, we are still without a coach. Bloomington North has placed as high as fifth in the state. They have gone to state competition every year for the last four years. My understanding is that there's a policy that administrators cannot be coaches, and I understand at times the need for that policy and that it could give that administrator a lot of authority and control over the teachers that they ultimately supervise, that if a student wasn't perhaps able to participate in sports due to grades, that they could say, you need to fix these grades so my player can coach. I understand that. I'm asking that whoever has the authority to do so, be it this Board, the Superintendent, or even the administrators at North, grant an exception that would allow Andrea Smith to continue coaching until we do find a replacement coach. I have spoken with her, maybe probably too much to her chagrin. She indicated that she would consider doing so, but wasn't sure if that was even a possibility. Many of these athletes that have been gymnasts have been gymnasts since they were three years old. We've got three seniors who started as, in a private club at two years, the other is three years, and the other is four years. And they're absolutely devastated that they may not have a senior, a senior season here at North. So again, if there's anybody who can grant that exception, allowing Coach Smith to resume coaching capabilities, I would greatly appreciate it, and if there's any direction as to who myself and other gymnastics parents who are here today as well could reach out to, you all have my contact information, and I would appreciate any direction. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight.
Dr. Henderson, can you speak on the coaching situation relative to gymnastics at both North and South in our efforts?
Sure, absolutely. What I can report to you and the Board is that the positions have been posted at both buildings since very, very early in September. The candidate pool for gymnastics coaches is very, very small. The candidates that have applied have been interviewed, but unfortunately, at this time, we have been unable to secure a qualified and well-trained coach to assume the role.
Thank you so much. We'd like to thank everyone for their comments tonight, and as always, we will be considering those, you know, in, in all of our sort of the ways that we do through proper channels and appropriate measures. We will now move on to our collective bargaining tentative agreement. We have a presentation on this collective bargaining agreement from, on the tentative collective bargaining agreement from Dr. Winston.
Thank you, President Hennessy. In terms of the timeline of events, formal bargaining began on September twenty-fifth, and a tentative agreement was reached on October twenty-second. A few highlights from the tentative agreement summary include the following, and all of these, the summary is actually posted on our website. Relative to our performance-based teacher compensation plan, for the next two school years, the corporation will provide teachers with annual one-time stipends. Eligible teachers, those who are rated either effective or highly effective, will receive a total of $1,000 for each of the next two school years. In terms of our, the state's new early literacy endorsement, the corporation will provide teachers who update their license to include an early literacy endorsement with a $200 increase to their base salary. Master's degree attainment, the new contract continues to recognize salary movement for teachers who earn a master's degree. For the instruction and supervision of students outside of contracted hours, the corporation will provide an hourly rate of $30 per hour for any teacher who is assigned and approved to instruct students outside of the regular contract day and outside of extracurricular activities. And $20 per hour for any teacher assigned and approved to supervise students outside of the regular contract day and outside of any extracurricular duties. The corporation will provide $20 per hour for any teacher assigned and approved to complete professional development work outside of the regular contract day. In the area of fringe benefits, the corporation will increase the number of paid rental leave days from eight to ten for all, for teachers regardless of gender on rows A to E of the salary schedule. Beginning January first, 2026, the corporation will provide a 20% discount on extended-day program to teachers with children in MCCSC's pre-K through sixth-grade program, and this discount will apply September through April. Beginning with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the contract updates how leave days are charged before and after major school breaks. In the area of insurance, the new contract includes agreed-upon school corporation contribution amounts for 2025 and 2026 to account for the increase in insurance costs. Retirement benefits. The new contract updates the retirement benefit match for teachers in rows A to E on the salary schedule, changing the matching percentage from 5% to 3.5%. And schedules for athletics and co-curricular activities. Girls' wrestling, boys' volleyball, and scholastic esports were added to the ECA schedule in order to accurately reflect the current ECA positions and pay rates. Additional details can be found on our website. I just want to take a point of privilege to extend my deep appreciation and gratitude to MCEA President Jenny Noble Kachera and her leadership team for a very collaborative and genuine process. I would also like to thank our Assistant Superintendents Alexis Harmon and Dr. Jeffrey Henderson, along with our CFO, Matt Irwin, for their leadership throughout the bargaining process. Thank you very much for the collaborative spirit and effort during the challenging times that all public schools are facing presently. So I just want to say thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. Are there any comments from the Board? I, I just want to echo Dr. Winston's gratitude for the entire team that was at the table for this collective bargaining. I know that it was not a great year for any of us, right? We think about all of the budget cuts and sort of fiscal realities that we're facing at this moment. We always want to do more for our teachers. We always want to do the very best that we can do. And we have been extraordinarily limited this year in what we're able to offer as a result of some of the cuts that are coming and the cuts that we've already seen. And so, you know, just my sort of ongoing sort of despair at that, at the state of things, and also my gratitude for you all continuing to work through this in the most collaborative way possible, possible. I'm just really grateful for that. So, thank you very much. We will ratify the MCEA agreement at the November eighteenth Board meeting. And that closes this portion of the meeting. We will now move on to SEA presentation. So this is an update on the Senate Enrolled Act I. Dr. Winston, will you introduce our guest?
Absolutely. So it's my pleasure to, to introduce to you all Mr. Barry Gardner. He is the Director of School Services at Policy Analytics. And we have established a partnership with Mr. Gardner and his company because of their knowledge base and extensive expertise around school finance and property tax issues. As everyone is aware, SEA I introduces some very significant legislation that is impacting school districts throughout the state of Indiana. And I thought it would be helpful in talking with the School Board, we wanted to be able to bring to the public what those impacts are and how that's going to affect our school corporation from a financial standpoint. So it's, it's again, it's my pleasure to, to welcome Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, Dr. Winston, and with the rest of the Board to talk a little bit in more detail about Senate Enrolled Act I and what it means for the school district here in Monroe County. As Dr. Winston alluded to, Policy Analytics works with school districts across the state. In totality, we're now engaged with a little over a hundred districts across the state in this work around Senate Enrolled Act I because of the implications. And we're going to walk through that tonight, kind of localize that of what we're hearing across the state, but also what it means for all of you in terms of consideration, not just today, but really over the next several years. Because Senate Enrolled Act I and the way it was implemented is really phased in over the next six years. And so we kind of have this churning of the legislation that's going to continue to come for the next few years. I won't go through really all of this. It's outlined in the presentation. This is really the impacts that are outlined in Senate Enrolled Act I. This was sweeping property tax reform. And they pulled many levers at the end of the day in an effort to try to curtail the impact of property taxes specifically on homeowners, but on some of the other areas in terms of farmers and the business sector as well. And so what has really come in is what we call deductions, right? When we look at paying our property taxes, we have what's called our gross assessed value, what our home's roughly valued at, and then they provide deductions that get us down to our net assessed value, which we're taxed upon. And anytime you increase deductions, you're going to have impact on net assessed value, which impacts tax rates, which impacts revenues, and that's what we're going to talk about tonight. So a lot of this in there. I don't know if it's a good example, but I said it's almost like you have a slot machine, except of only having one lever, you have four levers. And they've pulled four different levers all at once, and that's the kind of combination of difficulty this, this legislation has is in terms of how it comes out for each district. So I think to really start out and kind of frame a little bit of this conversation, I think there's some considerations for the district as you look at some future pieces. And we'll outline this in a little more detail in the, in the slides. And please, if there's something that come across and there's a question, I'm more than happy to take it either during the presentation or after. But really overall, the mechanics of Senate Enrolled Act I are going to increase tax rates regardless of what the school district does. And this is not just Monroe County schools. This is all school districts across the state. These are county units. These are city units. This is the mechanics of the bill. And so that's often tough, right? And so we highlight here that we may have to rethink our messaging or our thoughts of how we talk about tax rates because oftentimes we may think increasing rates may mean increasing revenues. And that's not the case in this legislation. Rates are rising regardless of revenues at the end of the day. And so oftentimes, that may cause us to think a little bit more about levy, revenue is what we often levy is revenue, and what do we need in order to support the students in the school district at the end of the day? And that's also going to play into some considerations. We'll talk a little bit about the referendum in this report. From a debt service perspective, again, this is going to impact that debt service rate at the end of the day, and it starts to have our focus around levy or needs really versus a rate. And that's really different because a lot of times across the state, school districts have been very rate-focused in terms of their overall tax rate or their debt service rate, and managing to a rate, as we sometimes call it. And that's just not going to be possible without giving up millions of dollars in revenue at the end of the day to keep the tax rate the same. And that's ultimately what would have to be done. When we look at the referendum, because it is driving down net assessed value, referendum revenue will decline over the next several years to the tune of approximately three to four million dollars annually in terms of fewer referendum dollars for the district. And that's just in terms of where you stand today. We're very used to revenue in the referendum increasing or expenses associated with what is in the referendum increasing. So the gap in some ways can be thought of even larger in that in terms of the end of the day for the district. And then the operations fund has some additional impact. It's going to grow at a much slower rate. But also, they established that districts now that have at least a hundred students and 2% of their population attending charter schools will have to share charter school dollars beginning in 2028, and it ramps up over a four-year period. And at the end of the day, that's 1.8 million dollars as we stand today that the district would have to share on an annual basis. So that's revenue that you would no longer collect, that you're collecting today. So again, a lot of hits in terms of, of our revenues that I think are going to cause some just things for the district to think about and how you navigate moving forward, you know, in terms of, you know, those referendum and operations fund dollars changing while still trying to maintain the level of services for students across the district that you are, are used to in many ways. So really, when we look at your tax base, this is really what drives this. We, we really, I won't spend a ton of time on a few of these slides, but we really highlight in detail down to what we often call is the parcel level. And a parcel is a piece of property. That can be a home, piece of farmland, an apartment, a business. And we play those out in terms of this. One of the things that the district does have going in its favor is your low overall tax rates. And because you have a low overall tax rate comparative to some places in the state, you don't have what we often refer to as circuit breaker issues, which is when a homeowner hits their 1% cap and can pay no more in property taxes, and any dollars above that aren't collected. What that bottom right chart shows that really you have very few parcels that are at the caps. That's very, very unusual. And that is a positive for the district in terms of a revenue piece to start. Doesn't mean it's still not impacted, but it's not an issue that we sometimes see in some places. The other piece that we look at is the makeup of your assessed value because this often drives some of the changes that we see. So these are the different tax classifications: residential, apartments, commercial. You do have what's called personal, it's business personal property. And this all really kind of tells the story of Monroe County in terms of the revenue at the end of the day. We often say sometimes this is the wallet, right? So it drives the revenue in terms of the assessed value. And having a diverse property tax base has typically been a positive because the only group in the past that has gotten deductions has been the 1% homeowners. Well, now we're adding deductions to the 2%, and we're changing the rules around the business personal property. And that's going to begin to shrink this pie at the end of the day. This pie really represents revenue. So what's happening over the next several years is reducing the AV base, which is reducing the revenue. And that's not just, again, for the town. That's also for the city and for the county here around the community as well. So one of the things that we do for districts is we look at what assessed value may do in the future. And having that assessed value outlook, again, because as assessed value goes, that impacts your tax rates and that impacts your revenues for us. And we saw a really unique change this year. This is some of the diverse piece that we dive into is how your assessed value changed from twenty-five to twenty-six. Overall, this is gross assessed value. This is before any deductions, and it grew by really kind of a moderate 3.2% overall. We see some pretty big jumps in the apartments, the commercial and industrial in a percentage basis, 10, 11%. But they're smaller pieces of the pie, so they often don't drive the, the issue at the end of the day. The other challenge with those from a long-term perspective is that there was a change by the Department of Local Government Finance. They had not changed their assessment of those types of properties since 2019, prior to the pandemic. They did a reset of what we call their cost tables. It's kind of a one-year reset. Moving forward, we will expect to see those kind of growth in those areas. So that kind of helped a little bit. The other challenging piece is that residential assessed value really didn't grow. And that's kind of an interesting piece because when we look at this next chart, what we know about our assessment system is that it's what we call market-based. It's defined by a Supreme Court case that says our assessed values have to be market-based, which means roughly what they're sold for on the open market. So as home prices go, typically the assessed value follows that. And so the last several years, we have seen home prices across the state, across the country, really climb over after the pandemic, and assessed values have kind of followed those, right? So that's what's driven a lot of the assessed value growth. What we see is we look at, you've had some pretty steady changes from year to year. What's a little bit surprising in the data is that in 2024, it says the median sales price that year grew by 3.8%. That is home sales that happened in '24 are assessed in '25 and a part of your '26 budget. Your '26 residential didn't grow. It grew by a much smaller amount. We're hopeful a little bit that as we see 2025 sales data, that we might have a little bit better assessed value growth moving forward. And that's, but it's, I think it's a little bit something to watch. Moving forward, we have residential growing by about 3.8%. Why is that so important? Is we have all these new deductions that are going to pull down against that. So if you don't have some of that residential growth, which you did not have this year, what happens in terms of assessed value? You saw that decline. Assessed value went down this year. Why? Because residential didn't grow for you. So we really are kind of hopeful we'll see some of that residential growth. The data would support that we might see it, but the deductions get larger and larger and larger, which are going to make it more difficult moving forward. Yes, sir?
Am I correct that this legislation and these, this round of deductions was triggered by the growth in AV across the state and concerns about property taxes?
Correct. Some data we've done for some, some other places is over the last several years, assessed value has grown annually by about 7.2% statewide, which has caused residential tax bills to grow by about actually 8% annually. And what we've seen is the tax burden has actually shifted towards homeowners and away from the businesses and apartments. And what we've seen is the tax burden has actually shifted towards homeowners and away from the businesses and apartments in some of those areas. Because they have grown so much so fast where the other sectors didn't see the growth. And so this legislation was spurred by these growing assessed values and a chance to try to temper maybe some of that property tax liability at the end of the day, what people are paying in terms of their home bills. This next slide then projects out assessed value. This is a really key slide that's going to set up our revenues and rate conversation. And let me walk you through just briefly. The top chart on the left with the lines, the green line is gross assessed value. And you can see that continues to grow. Why? They did not change our assessment system. They can't. Supreme Court case-driven, it's market-based. So we still project gross assessed value to grow, meaning a home worth 200,000 may move to be worth 210,000 to 220,000 from an assessed value standpoint. What they can change are the deductions. And when you increase the deductions, you drive down the blue and teal lines, which is the net assessed value. And that's what we actually tax on to generate revenue. And you can see that kind of downward slope. And we had a negative this year. Our assessed value actually went down by 1.1%. And we project in our data, the next five years, it will decline by 3.4% annually as we see things today. Why? We kind of shift our eyes to the bottom two charts. The bottom left shows the homestead deductions. And you can see from 2025, they grow from 3.6 billion to almost 6.3 billion in 2031. It's almost doubling the amount of deductions. So if we increase deductions, we're driving down that net assessed value, which is what we're seeing in the data. The bottom right is representative of the 2% class and apartments would fall into that. You can see 2025 is blank. There were no deductions for this class in 2025. The legislation brought on new deductions for this class. They started in '26. Again, these are phased in. They kind of capped out in 2031 in terms of the percentage. But that again now creates $2 billion in deductions that weren't there before. And that again is going to drag on your assessed value growth. And so that negative assessed value now is going to impact, we're going to talk about some revenues and pieces. This is how it looks like just in individual years. We often talk in a percentage piece. You can see 2027 is a little bit larger. That's because they created for the 3% class, which is business personal property, a new exemption. Used to be businesses did not have to report equipment under $80,000 for taxable purposes. That now goes up to an investment value of $2 million that they don't have to report. We're just pulling assessed value out of the system. And that's why '27 is a larger kind of negative decline in that particular situation. They flip back, if you notice, in 2032. That's because all the deductions are fully in place in 2031. We kind of moved back that as gross assessed value grows, net assessed value would start to follow. But we've got six years here where that's not the case, right? Where we're kind of moving into this new place. If you look on the left-hand side of that chart, we've seen growth in assessed value every year since, I believe it's 2015, 2016 on this chart, right? And now we're moving into a new world in terms of declining net assessed value. It's not something we're used to. So what's that mean? Well, there's a lot of impact on your revenues that we have to consider. This first one is probably the most complicated. I apologize, but I did not write the legislation, so please don't shoot the messenger. This is a new piece of legislation that was introduced, which is a 10% homestead credit. So the way this works is a homeowner, if they're paying $2,000 in property taxes, they're going to get 10% off, up to $300. So in this case, 10% of that 200 is $200 off their tax bill. So they're only going to pay $1,800. That $200 they're not paying is now revenue that the school and the city and the other local units will not collect. It's a benefit for the homeowner, but it creates a revenue issue on the school district. And that's what's detailed out here in this chart. So you can see from in 2025, it's a really small bar because you really didn't have any circuit breaker or what we might call unfunded credits. Unfunded credit meaning revenue you don't collect. It spikes in 2026. Why? Because this new legislation comes on, right? To the tune of almost $2.1 million in revenue that the district will not collect in 2026 through this legislation. It's split between the blue and the orange. That is because right now the legislation allows it to be applied to both the operations fund and the debt service fund. There is an issue with the debt service fund that's already starting to come out. Because if you don't have enough money coming into your debt service fund, it makes it hard to make your debt payments. And you may have to eventually move into other funds like your rainy day to make your debt payments. I've drawn a line to it. Why? Because we believe in the legislation session, maybe even this spring in 2026, they may come back and do what they call protect the debt service, meaning all of the impact would hit the operations fund. So what's that mean? That $700,000 that's currently in the debt would now move to ops. And that would be an additional $700,000 you would not collect in the operations fund. And that's something we have to keep aware of, something we've kind of talked obviously with Mr. Irwin in terms of his modeling of cash flow moving forward. Because we do think that's something that is going to happen. There's precedent for it. There's already a standard import S and P who rates school districts have already written an article with concerns about this issue in terms of SEA One. So we do believe that's going to happen. And that's going to be a negative impact unfortunately in terms of some revenue for the district. The second piece here within this, this is the referendum, the operating referendum revenue. As we currently stand, we've kind of called out the last year of full revenue source from the referendum. And what you see again is this decline overall in terms of referendum revenue. And that is because we're increasing deductions, which is driving down the net assessed value. So that rate times net assessed value at a lower amount is going to generate fewer dollars. And this is a real challenge, you know? I think there was some projections that all school districts had in terms of referendum revenue. Typically, in our past history is, as assessed value went up, so did the referendum revenue. So it had an inflationary component to it to help with salaries, to help with utility costs or those kind of pieces that referendums might support across the district. Now, not only does it not have the inflationary piece to it, it's actually going to go down in revenue. Which again, as I alluded to, creates that larger gap in terms of what it would have supported. This is a challenge. There are a number of school districts that are dealing with this across the state, and I think in a few different ways. You know, one is you have fewer dollars, so you can't support as many things across the school district or have to look for cost reductions. It's one of the natural pieces of having fewer dollars. The other in terms of a referendum is districts are considering going out for, in this case, when you already have a referendum, renewals sooner than what they originally intended, right? There's a number of roughly 55 school districts across the state that are currently considering operating referendums in calendar year 2026.
What percent of those are looking at renewing a current active referendum and which are looking at new?
Great question. I don't have the data source on that. Anecdotally, I would say over 50% of renewals.
And is that somehow related to the charter or dollar sharing?
So there's a couple of components with this. It's a great question. One, yes. If you run, the new legislation requires referendums in the future to also have to share the referendum revenue with charter schools like you are in your operations fund that we outlined. However, if you run the operating referendum in 2026, your revenue first starts coming in '27 and it predates that new language, which means you would not have to share with charter schools if you ran in 2026. So that's one of the reasons districts are looking at '26. The other reason is now you can only run referendums in even years in November. We used to be able to do every year and we had May or November that we could choose. So now it's '26, '28, '30, and I'm having to do it in November, which from a school perspective and a school budget situation is, school year's already started. And any adjustments we might make if a referendum passed or didn't, we have to absorb in that case, not knowing if we're going to have that referendum pass. So we have districts that, the reason the '26 number is so high. You have districts that were scheduled to go in '26 for a referendum. Districts that were scheduled to go in '27 that can't anymore and have to come forward. And districts that were supposed to go in '28, but have said, you know what? We want to go in '26 because of maybe the charter situation. Or if it doesn't pass, we can still come back in '28 because now it's November when we would have done it in May. So there's just a lot of thoughts around this because of this legislation. And oh, by the way, right now it's creating a declining revenue, right? And so one of the other reasons is to try to level out that revenue source, at least or an attempt, so it doesn't maybe impact as much in terms of the revenue versus expenditures when it comes to the school district piece, right? So there's a lot in two minutes that a lot of districts are thinking about right now because of this chart.
This follow-up question to that. So if we were to run one in '26, a renewal, then for the entirety of that referendum, we wouldn't share any of those dollars?
The referendum, correct.
Okay.
Until you went and renewed it.
Following in the next eight years or whatever it was. The other question is, if that renewal doesn't pass, do we maintain the current levy? Okay.
Yes. So typically, my understanding with your bond council or local council, when you submit to DLGF, is you would say we are, for districts that are doing this, right? So if they are coming and renewing new, early should say, if this passes, DLGF, we want the old one to go away and we're going to just take the new one. If it doesn't pass, then we want to take the remainder of the years that we have under the current referendum. So that's the other reason is again, if it doesn't pass and I can still come back in like a '28, I still have those dollars flowing that's not as impactful.
And last question, we have two referendum right now. We have the family-focused and then our typical operating. Can we bundle those?
In essence, I, so probably a little bit of a legal question. In essence, you potentially could in terms of running one new that would represent both, stating that both would go away. If the new would pass would be my understanding, but it's a legal question we probably want to dive through in that piece. But that would be my understanding of it.
Okay, thank you.
And just can you remind us, or maybe somebody else can, what, we have to have another referendum vote in 2028? Is that right? Is that when the teacher-focused referendum expires?
I believe it's 2030.
Yeah. 2030, okay.
It expires in 2030, yeah.
Thank you.
And I have not thrown enough good news at you already, especially in terms of the referendum. The challenge as you can see is with the rates, because net assessed value is going down, that 25, 26 cent rate will generate fewer dollars. So if I need to generate the 28 or 29 million dollars it is today, I can't ask for 26 or 27 cents. I may need to ask for 32 or 34 cents. Because 34 cents times the lowest point of assessed value in 2031 may get me the revenue I need. And so that's a whole nother piece of districts. We have six districts that are going this fall, November. We worked with four of those in planning. And the rates have gone from, the district had a 17 cent rate currently, it went to 26 cents. District had a 22 cent referendum, it went to 36 cents. And so those are the times of jumps you're seeing in rates because they need that. Otherwise, it doesn't generate the revenue in 2031 that's necessary. So again, all kind of moving parts to think, and that's why I put that up, is just some considerations, right? There's a lot to process. But at the end of the day, what you have to process is if the status quo is fewer dollars in the referendum revenue moving forward. I highlight this page, there's a lot of numbers. I just want to focus on the middle line. And that says the charter share. Because this is what's going to impact your operations fund starting in 2028. The legislation was written that again, if you have at least 2% or 100 students, we currently had you at 5.4% and 573. So well above that piece in terms of that threshold, that would say you would need to share with charters starting in 2028. It starts out as 25%. Think of it as a per student amount of your operations fund dollars. If you take your operations fund dollars on a per student amount, in 2028, they're going to get 25%, then 50, then 75, and then 100. And that's where it builds up as you can see in 2031, as it stood today, would be that 1.8 million. And so that is dollars that is coming out of your operations fund at the end of the day that you would not receive.
Question. Say we, say a school district falls below the threshold at some point, how does, does it, does the sharing continue or does it shut off?
I don't know how well-defined the process is yet on this calculation. It's a DOE piece that would come out each spring. They provide that to the auditor's office. So my assumption would be is if you didn't hit that threshold, then they wouldn't provide that information to the auditor's office and you would not share for that following calendar year. But the timing and all this is so new, that's a great question to kind of play out. That's really the point within this piece. Again, this is some of the modeling we do, just the board is aware. We do 10-year projections on all these pieces down to that granular level to really give you the best-case information we can in terms of your property tax revenues. This is a little bit of the summary pieces here. I want to highlight a few slides and then I'll wrap up. The top left represents the operations fund. And this really falls in line with what you heard from legislators in that they kept talking about your operations fund dollars, that you're not going to get less dollars, you're going to get less of more, right? And what they mean is your revenue is not going to go down, you're just not going to get as much as what you would have before. And that's kind of what their message was, right? We all need to tighten our belts, we all need to have some sort of constraint. And that's how the legislation was written in that piece. And that is true because as you see, at least from Monroe County, your operations revenue grows by about 2.5%. Much of that is due especially towards the tail end of that charter share. Operations fund revenue typically would grow around 4% annually. So it is about a 1.5% kind of decline, so to speak, in terms of growth in your operations fund revenue. So that's a challenge when we know expenses, some of our expenses are outside of our control, property, casualty insurance, utilities, all those kind of things can grow at a much higher inflationary pace. And we're going to have some curtailed revenue definitely in the piece. Again, something the district's going to have to work themselves through. I just want to, so this is the tax rate slide. And really for all intents and purposes, no matter the scenario, really no matter what you do in terms of your debt service or your overall rate, even if you do not ask for any additional dollars for, so to speak, in your debt service fund, your rates are going to increase. And that is the intentional mechanics of the bill. So it's not a surprise in seeing that. We're increasing deductions. That drives down net assessed value, which at the end of the day increases tax rates. And again, this is not just a Monroe County school situation. I say this chart looks the same for just about every district we work with. It's just the numbers are different of where you're starting from and where you end up. And you can see there's some statewide kind of averages. Again, one of the benefits for you in terms of your operations fund is that you have been well below that state average in terms of the total tax rate, which means you've not had that circuit breaker issue. So a real positive for the district to really, you know, and kudos in terms of being able to manage to a lower overall tax rate at the end of the day. And then the last piece is just one of the things we take a look at in terms of impact on the homeowner. So this is just pulling Bloomington City, it's Perry Township, it's a median homeowner. And what we project in terms of their tax bill over the next several years. This is gross, this would include the referendum as well. You do see a decline from 25 to 26 in terms of their tax liability. That is kind of played out in that chart at the bottom in the math. That is that new 10% homestead credit, right up to that $300. It's going to reduce the liability. And you do see their bill come down. And then it slightly continues to rise up, though it is, I will say, fairly flat compared to some other places and other districts that we work with. But so a little more stable tax rate here probably than what I'd say holistically across the state. But just a general sense of what we might see in terms of tax liability. We often, again, talk tax rates, but then they also, it's how much is a homeowner paying, right? And what's that look like? And so they will see a reduction that really over the next, call it six years, their tax bill is either less or the same as it is in 2025, which I think is a positive at the end of the day for a homeowner. Last few pieces, I'll kind of again, just reiterate some summaries and then more happy to take any questions. But we know again, we just talked, tax rates are going to rise. Those additional deductions is really what's causing it. It's the mechanics of Senate Enrolled Act One. That declining net assessed value is going to have impact on your referendum revenue. And that's going to generate fewer dollars. That declining net assessed value is going to have impact on your referendum revenue, and that's going to generate fewer dollars. And they know that your operations fund's gonna grow at a more muted pace, that's really driven again by that last point, which is the charter share dollars increase, starting in twenty-twenty-eight and increasing over the next four years to a fairly significant amount of that one-point-eight million. That's really what's happening locally for Monroe County as the mechanics. Which I think kind of takes us back to this future decisions, considerations, uh, for the district is navigating this, right? And this is a conversation we're having with school districts across the state. Uh, is that we are seeing a reduction or a constraint in revenue. It varies from place to place. Obviously, the referendum, if you have a referendum, there's a digital layer there that other places who do not have a referendum may have uh, in terms of that revenue change. But that's just gonna force the district obviously have to make some considerations in terms of how you operate, how you move forward, and what you think about the referendums, uh, kind of in future years. So I think that's, yes, my last slide, um, within this. I know that's a lot. I'm more than happy to answer any additional questions, um, for mayhem.
So as you've talked about tax rates increasing, but tax liabilities on the individuals remaining flat or increasing at a much lower rate's not the right word because we're talking about tax rates. So one way maybe to understand that is due to the fact that it's done by deductions, the homeowner, while they may see their tax rate go up, their tax bill will remain relatively flat. But yet they're going to see the the equity advantage in their property of the increased value.
Correct. The overall value of the property, the gross assessed value, which is that market base, would still continue to climb. But the additional deductions would pull down on that impact and negate what they would have paid in increasing taxes moving forward. Gets muted that it stays fairly level. And then the rates are somewhat arbitrary. Because they're going to go up, but it really doesn't have an impact on the actual liability at the end of the day because of the deductions.
Okay.
Um, in the spirit of of shifting my focus from tax rate to total levy generated, um, is there any chance that new construction in Monroe County could increase our total levy generated?
So potentially, um, you know, this is one that's always hard because of the size of your assessed value base already, right? So we often hear this, right, that, okay, I've got a business coming in or a commercial situation coming in. It has to be a fairly significant value to drive a whole lot of impact. Because you have, your tax basis is fairly large to to begin with. That being said, yes, new homes coming in, new businesses coming in, um, are obviously positives in terms of that assessed value, which would help maybe push back against the negative decline a little bit. But it's gonna have to be somewhat significant to really have some impact.
Thank you.
Would that be?
I just see a lot of construction.
Would that be? Would that benefit be nullified if those are in TIF districts?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Uh, not necessarily for you, because, um, it's a great question. So obviously a TIF district, the debt service fund and the operations fund do not have access to that assessed value, or those that we call increment, those dollars in the TIF. However, your referendum does. So you do have the benefit that if businesses do develop inside of TIF districts, you are going to see that benefit in terms of maybe some additional dollars inside of that referendum.
Okay.
So one of your pieces of consideration as you're speaking with, um, school corporations is to transition away from a focus on tax rate and focus more on how much revenue do you need to generate to be able to operate your school corporation? That's really the the conversation, that's the essence of the decision-making of a superintendent and a school board and the community.
Yes, I I believe, I think, in in our conversations, rates are going to increase regardless.
No matter what.
Right? And it kind of goes back to that that referendum piece, right? We could move the rate to thirty-two cents, but it's gonna generate the same amount of dollars, so the rate
Yeah.
really doesn't matter. It's really the levy, and what we often say to to have in consideration is levy is, we call it is revenue, right? So what is the revenue needed to support the school district and what your goals are? And what do you need that to be, um, at the end of the day? And I think that's really the question. It becomes really levy-focused, revenue-focused. And rates become a little bit of a side story. And it's very different because everything used to be completely on rates because rates drove the revenue much more than they do today.
Can you talk also a little bit more, a little bit more detail around existing referenda? And the the way in which this new legislation is automatically and immediately going to decrease our revenue as soon as twenty-twenty-six? And I think you said by about one-point-eight million?
So, uh, charter share is the one-point-eight million. Uh, it's, you look, sorry, the years are a little bit, you do see a slight bump in revenue in twenty-six with your referendum because I know your net assessed value went down, this is the TIF question, but the referendum revenue went up just slightly, for at least for twenty-six. We don't expect that to continue, right? So you can see, starting in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, that revenue began to decline. That's where we say in totality, when we get to around twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-one, it's about three to four million less in revenue. And again, Annually. And the reason for that, as we, the the referendum is a pretty simple math problem for property taxes. It's your rate times the net assessed value gives you the revenue. Well, if my net assessed value is going down, my rate times a lower assessed value is gonna generate fewer dollars. That's what's happening. Why is that happening? Because we're increasing the deductions, which gets into the liability kind of questions. And so that is the challenge within that is, again, it's outside of your control. Uh, you don't control the assessed value. You can only take your rate to a certain place because it's a maximum approved rate. Uh, and so that is what's gonna cause the ultimate decline in revenue.
So just to to clarify or to be clear, and this is mostly, I think, for people listening too, right? So when you think about the ways in which we are losing money, there is the decline in revenue. There is also the the loss of the the growth of that revenue, right? So there's the loss of the growth and there's the decline. And then on top of that, there's the charter school sharing, which is additional. So it's like at least three, well, you said four levers, but yeah, I mean, I know what you mean. But it does feel like this little tug toy I bought for my two puppies, and they're like both tugging at the same thing, and it's just like, eh, yeah, it so we're losing from all kinds of angles.
You are. Um, you know, they're, you're being impacted in in multiple ways. Biggest one, uh, biggest two, I'd say, is the referendum revenue and the charter share dollars at the end of the day. Those are the two biggest nominally, and I think biggest impactful wise in terms of revenue for the district.
The only issue, and this is not an issue for you to solve, obviously, with talking in revenue versus rates, is that when our voters go in to vote, they're gonna see a rate and not a dollar amount, not like a revenue amount, right? We can't write it in such a way that they would see.
So they, in a new ballot question, it's going to show the rate being requested.
Right.
The impact on a median homeowner in terms of the dollar figure, two-hundred, three-hundred, whatever that dollar figure is, and the maximum amount of revenue that you would generate under that in an annual year.
Okay.
Right? And so those three things are listed on the the ballot. The bigger challenge, I would say, in that question, right, is if we looked at twenty-thirty-one, and let's say you need to, I'm gonna use some round numbers, thirty-five cents to generate the same amount of revenue as you are today, you went out and approved that. Well, in twenty-twenty-six, thirty-five cents is actually gonna generate more revenue than what you need, because right now it only takes twenty-six cents.
Right.
And so that's the challenge that all these districts are facing, is they're having to approve this higher rate, right? And say, but we're only gonna take the levy in which we need, which is twenty-six cents this year, and then twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and it's going to grow. And that's where we often, some of the work we do at the district is to show then that liability impact on homeowners. Because often what we're seeing in that situation is the referendum liability stays the same and sometimes goes slightly down because of the legislation, even though the rate's going up, right? And so that's where the messaging comes, it's just a complicated, uh, piece, right? To your point, they're gonna see a rate, they're gonna see a dollar figure, and it may not actually speak to the change in what they're paying in taxes from one year to the next in actuality.
Right.
So that that ballot question reads something to the effect of a levy of thirty-seven cents up to a total collection of X number of dollars. So a levy not to exceed X cents to a total collection of.
Yeah, to an annual collection. So the thirty-five cents and maybe, you know, twenty-nine million dollars in an annual piece, and those are your two kind of limits, um, wi- within that piece. Again, we're it's just a complicated question.
Any other?
Uh, well, yes, so I I first, I think in your analogy, we are the tug toy. Is that, is that how that works out? Yeah, um, I it's, I just want to make sure that I understand the pros and cons of running a referendum in twenty-twenty-six versus twenty-twenty, twenty-thirty. Um,
We'd be twenty-thirty.
Oh, we'd be twenty-thirty.
We are twenty-thirty, and but the thing is, we're twenty-thirty and twenty-thirty-one, so we have to figure out, we can't run the twenty-thirty-one, so you have to renew either earlier or you have to lose a year, maybe later, but whatever, yeah. Or actually, the twenty-thirty would probably have this vote.
Yes.
But, no, that's okay, that that, I think that was helpful, um, I I uh, it's, now I have another question. Do we have to run them both at the same time? We could do one in twenty-twenty-six and one in twenty-thirty, right?
Can I, can I just, I, and I, because I know, I have a build-on clarifying question. Because actually, when we ran the family-friendly referendum, I think the idea was always that it would eventually be incorporated into the primary operating referendum. So I think that that was always the plan.
Okay, so.
I don't think we would have continued to run two, yeah.
Uh, so, now I've forgotten my, uh,
Yeah, it's about the pros and cons.
The pros and cons.
Six versus twenty-thirty.
So I, so I'm, I think I understand that the main pros of running our referendum in my mind, four years earlier than we would have to, than the deadline, would be that we would, um, uh, avoid the charter sharing issue. And, uh, what was the other one? That's the main benefit.
Then if it doesn't pass,
And if it doesn't pass, we have another chance.
Within that piece, actually, a couple of times, you know, potentially given your setup, because you are pulling it forward pretty, pretty far.
And the main risk is that we either won't ask for enough in twenty-twenty-six to cover our expenses in twenty-thirty, or we ask for what seems like an astronomical amount in twenty-twenty-six, but is enough for twenty-thirty.
The risk that, uh, is there in twenty-six is is kind of to your point. You're, we're gonna, you have to work to really establish, what is that need and that delta over those eight years? And again, that might mean again, thirty-five cents, thirty-seven cents, it might be a big jump, right? And that's, we did all the the issues we just talked about. Versus the running in twenty-thirty-one, you really have that, excuse me, twenty-thirty, um, you really have that one-year decline, and then the deductions are fully in place, and AV starts to go up and kind of return to our old mechanics. So that's kind of off the top of my head, it's the first time I've asked this question, so forgive me, but that's the bonus, I would say, of running in a twenty-thirty is that you kind of get away from this situation of a declining net assessed value for all these next six years. The challenge, though, again, though, of waiting until twenty-twenty-six is the declining revenue source.
The challenge in waiting until twenty-thirty?
Wait until twenty, yes, wait until twenty-thirty, is the declining revenue situation, and can you adjust within those pieces? And I don't know if it's a pro or or not, um, but there's going to be, uh, a number of districts going out in twenty-six. And I don't know, again, some people might think that's a a positive because it speaks to the needs that are there for schools, and we're talking about the impact of this legislation, and we're having to make adjustments, and lots of people are having to do that. I I don't know, uh, in terms of that piece. But I'm sure, November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, we'll have a better answer to that question, if it was pros or cons, right? But, um, there has been conversation around that. There's a lot of districts going out. What's that mean in terms of overall situation?
Thank you.
I'd like to also offer the opportunity for any member of my executive team, if you have a question or a comment that you would like to share um, during this moment, please feel free to to jump in.
Well, I appreciate the analogy of the tug toy. Cash flows, I kind of feel that a little bit. But the data is invaluable. It's not a ton of great news, right? It's not, it's not a lot of fun to hear some of this news, but this data is invaluable in order for us to be able to plan appropriately as it relates to the projections and the things that we're doing on a year-to-year basis. So that we're not just planning for what happens at the end of twenty-twenty-five or in twenty-twenty-six. We're looking out by six, seven years in advance to say, where are we going? And policy analytics, they they bring that data that helps us to make the types of educated decisions to do what's best for kids. And so I think that I I just have appreciation for as I look at this, I'm looking at all these numbers. These numbers are included into the projections that I do as far as losses or revenues or AV and some of those pieces, which are incredibly helpful in us planning in the right way, so I thank you for that.
And I would say that Barry's numbers are the things that keep me awake at night.
What are my numbers?
The numbers that you are bringing to us from our legislature.
Thank you. We're just even in the projections of AV, they were, you know, when we got the initial report, it was very accurate as far as just the projections of AV. So when you're talking about making plans year over year about declining AV and that impact on revenue, it brings a little bit more certainty of saying, is what I'm seeing on this page, how likely is it to occur based on what it is that we've seen or the data that they provided in the past? And so that's immensely helpful for that planning piece.
Dr. Henderson or Mrs. Harmon, any comments or questions that you would like to ask?
Well, I think the comment that I would have is that, uh, obviously the implications are heavy in the operations fund. And as the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Operations, it certainly raises the eyebrows to how can we work within our operations team to find efficiencies and to save dollars? And, um, those things are gonna create significant challenges for us. But I, along with, uh, obviously Mr. Irwin, I want to echo our thanks for being able to provide long-range projections for us to be able to, uh, begin to to make plans around how we manage that. And and it will certainly have an impact, I'm I'm sure, on on the board's decision with regard to whether or not we choose to go early for a referendum when we think about those, that declining enrollment.
I think I'd be repeating most of what people have said, but I will say thank you again for the information. I think it's informative. I think we know, um, referendums are essential to, um, public schooling these days. And so to have good information about when to run it, what the impact will be, um, is really essential. Thank you.
Yep, thank you so much.
I just want to echo all of that. You've been an invaluable advisor to us on this matter and others as well. And, um, being able to provide key decision points that we need to to give consideration to is essential for us to be able to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars. And to make sure that we are well-positioned to continue to be fiscally sound and to be able to deliver on our promise to our community in terms of excellence in our classrooms and excellence in our programs and excellence in our supports and services. And so it is exceedingly helpful to me, um, in spite of the heartburn, um, it is exceedingly helpful to to be able to have this kind of information at our fingertips to be able to inform decision-making, and and I cannot overstate my appreciation um, for how this does in fact guide, uh, the conversations that Mr. Irwin and I have on a daily basis about cash flows. And every decision, we go back and look to see what's the short-term impact and what's the long-term impact. And and we could not do that without without this information, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it's given us a lot to think about. I mean, you know, it's it's really a difficult time to think about asking people for more money, right? Um, at this particular moment, we're thinking about SNAP benefits going away and people not getting paychecks at this moment with shutdowns and, I mean, all sorts of things, right? So to think about going and asking for more dollars, it feels really daunting. And, you know, I have, I, there's always this sort of juggle. I mean, someone once said, oh, you'd be great at development, would you like a development job? And I was like, heck no, because my least favorite thing in the whole world is asking people for money. Like, I never want to do it. And it's just one of those things that like, as a member it's just one of those things that, like, as a member of this board, our job is really to think about this district and its well being, fiscal well being, um, among other things. And so I think there's a lot for us to sort of discuss and talk about and think about in the coming months, for sure. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I have one final question.
Yeah.
This is a newer development, but I am curious if any of the school districts that you're working with that are currently looking at their their referendums early in twenty six are um expressing concerns or how to tackle the fact that Lieutenant Governor is actively going out and canvassing neighborhoods to stop the referendum from passing in those areas. Um, I wasn't going to bring it up, but when you talked about concerns about what could happen if we asked early, um, that cropped back up into my mind. And so I didn't know if anyone has brought that to your attention or asked what the ramifications could be concerning that. I know your numbers, but um, I don't know how it changes the dynamic of the numbers for pass.
No, I I it's a relatively new development within the last week, um, you know, in terms of that piece. Um, and so I don't know that anyone at this point has any sense on what that means. Um, you know, there is there's obvious concern from a lot of constituents across the state about property tax liability, and then unfortunately, back to this analogy pushes up against
Yeah.
what services are we providing for our students or not. And so I think it's just another wrinkle to a complicated topic.
Well, thank you so much for your time and energy. We appreciate you as always.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your partnership.
Thank you. Absolutely. Okay, we move on to something a little bit easier, which is our consent agenda. Uh, and that includes the following: the memorandum from the executive session and minutes from the hearings and regular board meeting held on September twenty third, twenty twenty five; memorandum from executive session held on October twenty first, twenty twenty five; ECA expenditures, overnight and out of state field trips, financial report from September; appropriation balance report from September; register of uh claims from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five; payroll and payroll claims, uh, September twenty twenty five; request to declare a surplus and authorized disposal of out of date items. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Asia that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions?
Yes, because I was in the executive session. It's all I'm saying.
Ah, okay, that's fine. Uh, so let it be known that we have six, nope, yes, we have six ayes and one abstention, Ross Grimes. Um, but with that, the motion does carry. Next, for our consideration, our donations. We have received donations of over nine thousand dollars. Uh, as always, we thank our donors. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. Do I have a motion to accept our donations?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Erin Wyatt that we accept the donations as presented. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next, for our consideration, is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Ross that we approve the personnel report as presented. Dr. Henderson.
President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees, this evening, I'd like to call your attention to the following administrative appointments. I'll give a slight pause to allow uh those administrator administrators to address the board, and then we'll discuss some retirements. So first up this evening is Marty Colglazier, uh, being recommended to the board this evening to serve as the interim principal of the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship. Uh, Marty returns to MCCSC after serving as the principal at Fairview Elementary School for five years. Marty holds a master's degree in elementary education from the University of Indianapolis. Marty?
Thank you so much. I'm very happy to serve the district as the interim principal at the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship. Most importantly, I'm happy to serve the students and to be there for them and to be there uh for the faculty at the academy and for my friend, Mrs. Evans, as and I really wish her a very speedy recovery and to hurry up and get back to her school. And um, anyway, I'm just really happy uh to be there and to serve in this capacity, and I appreciate your willingness. I and mainly, the last reason that I um am willing and able at this point to serve in this capacity is that I heard that the district was opening a retirement and a nursing home for retired administrators, and I wanted to be the first one in line. So, thank you very much.
I think I think we're good. I'd like to hear more about that retirement uh program, but yeah.
Up next this evening, I'd like to introduce Hattie Johnson. She is returning to MCCSC to serve in the capacity of interim director of our Child Nutrition Department. Hattie returns after serving the MCCSC as Director of Child Nutrition for fourteen years. Hattie holds a master's degree in counseling from Valparaiso University. Hattie?
President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, members of the board. I am really happy to be here. I didn't think I would be this happy, but it feels like really great to be home. Um, I'm appreciative that y'all thought about me when you needed somebody to step in for a little while. I didn't come to stay. I didn't come to stay. I came to be helpful and of service to the students and families at MCCSC. Um, I am really looking forward to getting started, Mandy, so thank you.
We appreciate you both um being willing to come back and, you know, to serve again in the district.
And I I would like to just echo that. We are so grateful and indebted to to both of you for just your your tireless years of service. Um, and the fact that you you're really ready to step out of retirement and come back and serve, we we appreciate that, and our children are only going to benefit. So so thank you both for your immediate yes responses.
I I do want to reiterate that one of the very first things that Ms. Johnson said to me on the phone when I was speaking with her about this opportunity was, you are talking about a short term stint, right? She was very clear. Uh, again, this evening, I'd also like to draw your attention to two retirements in the board packet this evening. We have one administrative retirement, uh, Tim Hudson, who uh has been serving uh with MCCSC for the last sixteen and a half years as an assistant principal at Bloomington High School North. This was actually Mr. Hudson's second stint with MCCSC, having previously served as assistant principal at Jackson Creek Middle School for three years, prior to leaving the district for a little while and then coming back um at Bloomington High School North. In addition to that, we have a certified staff retirement, Karen Papadopoulos. She's been with MCCSC for the last twenty nine years, serving most recently as a Title I teacher at Grandview Elementary School. On behalf of MCCSC, I would certainly like to extend a special thanks to these retirees for their many years of dedicated service and wish them well in their next adventures. And at this time, I request that you please approve the recommendations presented in your board packet in the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Henness- Henderson. Um, any other comments from the board? Oh, well, I want to wish our retirees all the best. Um, and for Dr. for Tim Hudson, um, we used to go Pokemon hunting together. When his grandson was about the same age as my son, we would like go catch Pokemon on these hot summer days, because that's what you could do. Um, that's what you could do to get these boys to walk, so that's what we did. But anyway, so best wishes to all of those retiring. Uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. We'll now move to contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts and a quote as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Tiana that we approve the contracts and quote as presented, Mr. Irwin.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the board. Two particular agreements that I would like to call to your attention, of just kind of that feel good nature. One is um with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. They provide um mentoring services to students at no cost to the corporation. So that is an example of a great partnership we have in the community that come in and directly support our students. And then another one is with Stone Belt Freight. They provide a semi to help Bloomington Norris Band get their equipment to um competitions. And again, that contract is for not to exceed ten dollars. So I just wanted to call attention to both of those agreements as prime examples of the way that our community rallies around the school corporation to support our students and just say thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Anything else? You're good?
That's it. I recommend us.
Okay, cool. Uh, any comments from the board?
I don't know if we can afford it.
Ten dollars.
It's a lot.
Pushing it. Okay, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve the contracts and quote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We now move to budget resolutions. Next is the recommendation to adopt the twenty twenty six budget resolution. Uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty, which is appropriations and tax rates for the twenty twenty six budget. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty one uh is for the capital twenty twenty six capital projects plan. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty two for the twenty twenty six bus replacement plan. Uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty three, anticipated transfers, and resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty four, the budget resolution. Do I have a motion to adopt these budget resolutions as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ross and seconded by Tiana that we adopt the twenty twenty six budget resolutions as presented. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, as you mentioned, there are five separate uh resolutions that you are approving. We talked about this throughout the process dating back to August, when we asked for permission to advertise. September, we did our hearing, and then this month, we do adoption. And then with you all's approval, then we will submit that up in Gateway to the DOGF for them to work the budget. So again, everything has been submitted. We followed the plan as far as what the state's requirements are. Uh, the form four, that like I said, that's the uh resolution that shows the proposed levies and rates. Again, we said that has the fluff in it. We know and I think many of you have been through this a few times, some of you not as much, but we talked about this throughout the process, that it has that fluff in there that is the ceiling. DOGF comes in and works that budget. They put in actual AV. They put in the actual levies that we use and and as it relates to what it is that we have in there, and then they come back and work that. We know that AV and and we talked about some of these things in Barry's presentation, that our AV this year um did decline slightly, um, about one, a little over one percent in our non-referendum AV, and then our referendum AV declined about um a little under half a percent. Uh, but that that is that first form. That's the same form that every school corporation in the state approves. That's the one that's a part of the process, and then you saw the backup forms that that feed up into it. It's the same things, again, that we showed during August and September. And then the capital projects resolution, that's for the capital projects plan that, again, that's been advertised since September second. The same thing would be for the bus replacement plan. Again, it's the resolution that flows along with the bus replacement plan that, again, has been posted since September second. And then the other two, um, resolution one is the the transfer amount for the last six months between education and operations. That just clarifies and note at the beginning of the year, you pass a resolution that's an up to amount for the entire year. This is just solidifying through the budget process what we expect to do during the last six months of the calendar year. It helps our DOGF rep, and it backs up to what it is that we have in our budget in the individual sheets. And then the last one is one um that's a little bit newer that I'm accustomed to doing, but it's the resolution that gives Dr. Winston and I the ability to make any adjustments to the seventeen eighty two notice when it comes in from the DOGF in December, sometimes as late as January, hopefully not, but typically in December, when that seventeen eighty two or the budget order, when the DOGF rep has worked our budget, they'll send that buck back and they'll say, you have a ten day period to make any adjustments to this that you wish to make. That allows her and I to talk that over, make those adjustments to make sure that we meet the goals of the board. So with that, I'm recommending your approval of all five of the different pieces for the budget adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin. Do we have any comments from the board? Okay, yeah, I think we have done lots of uh discussion and meeting on these things in prior months at these board meetings. Um, so all those in favor of the motion to approve the twenty twenty six budget resolutions, uh, as noted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. We now have a policy that is presented for first reading, new policy five one one one, eligibility of resident or non-resident students. Uh, Dr. Winston.
Yes, thank you, President Hennessy. Yes, policy five one 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 has to do with revisions being made to update the current language. Um, HEA set uh ten sixty four amends Indiana Code twenty dash twenty six dash eleven dash thirty and twenty dash twenty six dash eleven at dash thirty two, which addresses the transfer of students to a corporation outside of the student's legal settlement, uh, ultimately to primarily eliminate the athletic reason prohibition when a student is transferring uh to another Indiana school corporation. The elimination of this prohibition was in response to the new IHSAA ruling, which allows a student to transfer one time for athletic reasons to another member's school and maintain eligibility for athletics at that school. So this policy is presented for the first reading and will be presented for the second and final reading at the November eighteenth board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, as this is a first reading, there is no action that's required. If you have any questions or concerns about the policy as it's written, please do let Dr. Winston know. Thank you, Dr. Winston, and we will now move on to district updates. Tonight, we have several informative updates to be presented. The first is a human resources update. Dr. Henderson.
Helps if you turn it on. President Hennessy, Dr. Winston, and members of the Board of School Trustees, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share an update from the Human Resources Department with you this evening. Like to spend a little time this evening. There we go. I'd spend a little time this evening providing the board with and the public with a staffing update, share some more information about the review and analysis process that we engage in on a weekly basis, and discuss some of the current openings that we are hiring for and how members of the community can apply for those opportunities. At a previous board meeting, I shared some data with you regarding how we started the school year, and I just want to remind you of a few key items. Ninety-eight percent of our allocated positions were filled when school began. I want to remind you that this is a typical percentage, as we often learn of resignations from existing staff just before they're scheduled to return from summer break. And filling those late vacancies takes a little bit of time. I shared that our certificated staff to student ratio saw a minimal increase this year, and I'll remind you of that number in a future slide. And as we analyzed ways in which we could increase the quality of services we provided to students in the midst of this, one example of how we were able to do that comes directly from our Director of Health Services. She developed a plan that was not only fiscal responsible and saved the corporation money, but that also increased the number of registered nurses in our corporation from eleven to thirteen, ensuring that our students are receiving high quality care in our buildings on a daily basis. Every position in the school corporation is evaluated based on student needs and corporate operational functioning needs. So just to remind you of how we manage that process. So as I just shared, we've been strategic and measured in our staffing decisions across all areas, and this brings me to an important important point about transparency and how our community accesses staffing information. Like to take a moment to help everyone better understand how to interpret some publicly reported staffing data on the state's public dashboard, the Indiana Gateway. As a public school corporation, we're required to publicly report employee data, including employee positions and wages. It's important for for everyone to fully understand how the data is reported so that it can be accurately interpreted. The first point I would like to make is that this data is reported on a calendar year basis, not on a school year basis. I'll talk about how that what implications that has as we as we work through this slide. But before we begin, I wanted to find some standard human resources terminology that's widely accepted across organizations. The term administrator is commonly defined as someone who holds a leadership. The term administrator is commonly defined as someone who holds a leadership position and who has decision-making authority for that organization. At MCCSC, a few examples of administrators include the superintendent, the assistant superintendent positions, central office directors, and school principals and assistant principals. In contrast, an administrative position is a support position that performs administrative support tasks. A few examples of those positions within MCCSC could include human resources staff and payroll personnel, administrative assistants, or secretaries. It's not accurate to use those two terms interchangeably. Next, I'd like to, to outline how positions may appear on the dashboard and how to interpret a listing of positions correctly. There are various reports in the Indiana Gateway, so I want to really share this general context that can be applied across those reports. The most important thing to know is that a position listed does not necessarily translate to an employee working during that particular school year, as we typically think of it. The way payroll works in a public school corporation, contracts for teachers and administrators encompass portions of two calendar years. So their payroll records span across those two calendar years. When looking at data in Gateway, an employee who left the corporation at the conclusion of school year twenty-two, twenty-three and is listed in the twenty twenty-two Gateway report still appears on a twenty twenty-three Gateway report, even though they are technically not employed during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As a result, people who have left the organization appear in both annual reports, but they're not actually serving students during the second school year. To get an accurate count of employees serving students in any given year, this overlap needs to be accounted for, and that is not evident in a Gateway report. A perfect example of this would be myself. I appeared in the twenty twenty-four Gateway report, and so did my predecessor. However, I was the only one who worked for MCCSC during the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. That same situation occurs every time there's a transition during the summer between school years. So it's critically important that, that you understand that context as you're reading those reports. One example is that MCCSC has seen a net increase of five-point-five administrator positions in the last five years. However, during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, when we began our two-year strategy to achieve financial balance, we applied the same process of leveraging attrition to administrators as we did with other certified staff members. This resulted in a reduction of four administrative positions for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. But those individuals would still be listed on the twenty-five Gateway report because they would have received pay during the twenty twenty-five calendar year. We continue to evaluate staffing levels across every employee group as we seek balance with our enrollment numbers and our available revenue. Viewing an Indiana Gateway data report without this context could easily result in inflated numbers of positions. So my goal in, in sharing this important information is to ensure our community members have the context of how corporation data is reported and some of the nuances that need to be considered when evaluating those reports. As student enrollment declined, as shown on the slide above, numbers of teachers remained unchanged from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. With no certified staff reductions, other than voluntary retirements and resignations in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, our ratio is nearly unchanged. The ratio is. Whoops, sorry. Transitioned twice there. Uh, the ratio went from twelve-point-nine to thirteen-point-four certificated staff members. So a half a percent of change. This particular number doesn't necessarily relate to what teachers see in their classrooms with regard to actual class size. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the process that we've gone through to analyze class size across the corporation. All schools submitted weekly enrollment counts every Wednesday, starting before school even started and continuing all the way up through our ADM count day. Members of the human resources and curriculum, uh, instruction and assessment teams went out and visited schools and physically counted students in classrooms. And we have weekly meetings with directors of special education that include reviews of caseloads, class sizes, pending evaluations, and enrollments of students with special needs. So let's look specifically at class size averages across the district. Our early learning class sizes average fourteen per classroom. Our kindergarten through sixth grade classes across the district average twenty-three. At our secondary schools, counting all content areas, electives, everything that we offer, the average class size is twenty-two across all of our secondary schools. This includes the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship, as well as Bloomington Graduation School. This is not just our larger comprehensive middle schools and high schools. When we dig a little deeper and we start talking about those content area classes that are really required for things like that, uh, honors seal that i- is new. If you look at English, math, science, and social studies, along with world language, the class size average is twenty-three. So, um, I want to point out that this data does not include the Hoosier Hills Career Center because that serves not only MCCSC schools, but five surrounding school corporations as well. So we, we didn't include that data in this analysis. We do recognize that there are outliers. There are classes that are smaller than this, and there are classes that are larger than this, depending upon the offerings and the content area at play. But at the secondary level, one of the things that we try really hard to do as a corporation is offer a diverse range of classes to meet the needs and the interests of the students that we serve. So that's why you see that reflected in those class sizes. When we begin to offer very discreet and very specific course offerings that are tailored to the interests and talents of our students, sometimes we see that impact the overall class average. Want to speak a little bit this evening to, um, how the HR can, the HR team works in collaboration with departments and directors, as well as the business office and the curriculum instruction office, uh, on a weekly basis. We conduct weekly meetings in my department, the HR department, with the directors of each department to review their current staffing levels, the metrics that we use to determine appropriate staffing, and establish context for a weekly staffing analysis, analysis meeting. These weekly meetings with directors really provide an opportunity to gain additional insight to each department's individual needs as well as the student needs at any given point in time. We then take that context from that week, those weekly meetings with directors to a collaborative analysis meeting where leaders from HR, curriculum, and the business departments uh, meet every Friday to review those staffing, uh, numbers and to make recommendations about filling positions. Our goal is always to meet the needs of our students while ensuring financial sustainability and meeting our operational requirements as an organization. Like to share a little bit about current openings that exist within MCCSC that are currently posted and, uh, highlight the fact that we, we have postings out for guest teachers, operation staff positions, a special education teaching position, instructional support staff positions, and our extended day staff, uh, positions as well. Some folks may be asking in the community, how in the midst of budgetary constraints can MCCSC still be hiring? So the positions that are being hired are as a result of new openings that result when employees leave MCCSC for a variety of reasons. Staff members don't just leave this organization during the summer months. It's important to know that that turnover happens all year long. These positions are student-facing or operationally essential roles that must be replaced when a staff member has left a position. So as previously mentioned, these positions have all gone through a rigorous analysis process where HR, curriculum, and the business office leadership position, uh, uh, members review these positions weekly to determine which vacancies meet the criteria for being refilled and to ensure that we're remaining fiscally responsible to the community. As a reminder and a thank you to our community, in twenty twenty-two, we passed a referendum that continues to support MCCSC employees, teachers, and staff members. That twenty twenty-two referendum funding continues to support a portion of all employees' wages and benefits. In our referendum impact report that we published in May of twenty twenty-five, we reported thirty-four-point-five million dollars of the twenty twenty-two referendum had been invested to date in teachers and staff through hourly and base salary increases. These significant investments have allowed MCCSC to continue to attract and retain highly qualified educators and staff in a very competitive job market. As always, I'd like to express a thank you to all of our employees, teachers, and staff for everything that they do every day to make MCCSC a great place to learn and work. And a special thank you to our community for your support of our referendum. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Are there any comments from the board?
I really appreciate that you highlighted how to properly look inside of the database because of the large inflation of numbers.
Agree. I think it's really important. I mean, uh, not only have I seen it be misreported, um, in at least one of our local papers, I've heard people use numbers inaccurately as well. And I think it's very important for people to understand how to read those numbers and how those, the impact of those numbers will occur on that report. And I, you know, I, I think it's one of those interesting things because I think we stressed it too when we were beginning the, um, I don't want to say reduction, but the attrition process, right? And sort of reducing through attrition, we were very clear that, and actually the first round of that sort of attrition was at the administrative level, right? At, at both administrators and administrative and in this building and any, and, and that's the other thing that I just want to say, like, when you think about who is housed under the sort of main administrative office or the MCCSC main office. It isn't just the people who work in that building. There are other people who sort of get housed under that payroll because they don't have, for instance, like a homeschool, right? So I just, I think there are all of these sort of nuances and variables that people don't quite understand when they begin to look at that data and use those numbers to make points. So I really appreciate the clarity, um, with which you delivered that.
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I was gonna say everything that April said, but I definitely appreciated that. Um, but I was gonna say, I appreciate you saying that you got those positions open and why and what that means. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Then it looks like our next presentation is an early learning update from Dr. Dowling.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Winston, President Hennessy, and members of the Board of School Trustees for this opportunity to provide an early learning update. The main topics I'll be talking about this evening are student and family impact, enrollment with a focus on increased access due to the twenty twenty-three referendum, academic outcomes, and then talk about our infant and toddler programs. First, again, I'm going to talk about our early learning, uh, impact on both our students and families. In May of twenty twenty-five, Dr. Henderson highlighted this. We shared a referendum impact report. In that report, we've shared in detail how we've spent the money, particularly in, on, in the aspect of early learning. In that report, you can also see lots of feedback from our community members, from our families who have taken advantage of our early learning programs. I encourage everybody to look at it. It'll brighten your day if you read those comments. It certainly brightens mine when I read them. Just to share one on student impact, this is a quote from one of our families. My child has shown significant growth across all areas academically, emotionally, and socially. He's become more confident in his learning, more emotionally aware and resilient, and has built strong positive relationships with peers and adults alike. We know that this has had a huge impact on not just our children, not just on our students, but also on our families. This is a quote from one of our families about the impact on the whole family. We love the pre-K program. The program is full day, which has enabled me to keep a steady work schedule. Has also learned values we practice at home like inclusivity and tolerance, which are of utmost importance. And I think this quote highlights, uh, among the student quote as well, about not, this is not just an investment in our students, but an investment in our families and our community. Really happy to share some of these, uh, enrollment numbers to show how access to early learning has increased, uh, thanks to the twenty twenty-three referendum. MCCSC family access to early learning has more than doubled since we've expanded our programs courtesy of the referendum. Our three-year-old preschool and four-year-old preschool, four-year-old pre-K numbers have increased from two-hundred-and-sixty-two to five-hundred-and-twenty-six students, more than doubling. We know for our pre-K program, a hundred percent of our students either attend for free or half-cost or less. And with our expansion of our three-year-old preschool program this year, we know that seventy-five percent of our students are attending for free, thanks to the referendum. I always like to take time to highlight our curriculum that we use. We do use a play-based curriculum because we know that's what's best for kids and how students best learn in early learning. We use a program called Creative Curriculum. We know that it improves kindergarten readiness. We know that it supports the whole child. We know that it's aligned to Indiana's early learning standards, and then it's in alignment with our desire to have a play-based curriculum. I wanted to circle back to, uh, our enrollment numbers because I really think it shows our, how this referendum has had a direct impact on increased access to early learning in our corporation. These are our four-year-old pre-K number enrollment numbers for this, uh, earlier this year from September tenth. Really just want to highlight how we have a four-year-old pre-K program in all our elementary schools. We, as of September tenth, we had three-hundred-and-twenty-two students, which is higher than what we started with last school year, so we know our program continues to grow. We also have six community partners where students are accessing pre-K through the support of the twenty twenty-three referendum. Our numbers went from forty-six last year at our six community providers to sixty-two this year, so we know that is also continuing to grow, which we're really pleased to see. Just highlighting some act, increased access. We know that our pre-K numbers more than doubled from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five when we increased with the referendum funds. And we know that our enrollment from this year in pre-K is higher than it was to start last school year. Looking at our three-year-old preschool program, which is what we've been able to expand this year courtesy of the referendum, we have a hundred-and-fifteen students in our three-year-old preschool programs across our six elementary schools and our two early learning centers. We have twenty-seven students at our community partners who are accessing these programs using MCCSC referendum funds. So to highlight some increase in three-year-old preschool enrollment because of the, uh, the referendum. In MCCSC-based programs, our preschool enrollment has increased by forty-seven-point-four percent. When you include the students that we're supporting in our community providers, increased access in three-year-old preschool has increased by eighty-two percent due to the referendum. What do we know? Well, we know that increased access means more school, more of our students are school-ready, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that now. We use an assessment in early learning and in our, uh, in our early learning programs. I Spout is a commonly used assessment used in Indiana. It's an observational test. The teachers are observing their students and then recording data. The goal of that assessment is really to see how our students, particularly for our pre-K students, is how they are measuring up in kindergarten readiness. At the beginning of last school year, nineteen percent of our students were demonstrated to have, be kindergarten-ready. By the end of last school year, uh, it was now eighty-three percent. An increase of sixty-four percent of our pre-K students now being kindergarten-ready for this year. We're really pleased by that data. I want to just dig into the data a little bit more to show that this data is more than just these important early literacy and early math schools, is math skills. It also is about social foundations, physical well-being, and motor development, science and finance. It's really a perspective of the whole child. So that red bar is a three, and the dark blue is at the end of school year. And you can see at the end of the school year that, that our students were above that three-point-O line, showing that they were ready, not just one of the domains, but all six domains, that they were kindergarten-ready. We know that that data is really important, but we know it was equally valuable as our feedback from our kindergarten teachers. And since the very beginning of the year, as I was visiting schools, as I was visiting classrooms, we were hearing from our kindergarten teachers that this year is different, that they can see. That they can see that our students are more ready for kindergarten than they've ever been. Our students are feeling more confident, feeling more prepared, feeling more comfortable, whether it's classroom discussions or attending specials with their specials teachers. This is the feedback we're hearing across the corporation from our kindergarten teachers. We know that our students feel more prepared to know what's expected of them, and it just has been a really positive experience for them to start this year. I want to conclude by highlighting our really important infant and toddler programs that serve children in our community. We have programs for infants and toddlers at our two early learning centers, Early Learning Center South and Early Learning Center North. Some key takeaways I want to finish with is that, just sharing that access to early learning in our corporation is more than double courtesy of the referendum. I do have to, want to point out the, how amazing this is, uh, especially in light of what's unfortunately happening across the state. In the state right now, we have over twenty-five thousand students who are on a waitlist for CCDF, who are unable to access early learning programs because of these cuts that are happening across the state. We are protected and blessed to have this referendum, so we are having very different outcomes for our children because of this referendum, and for that, I'm eternally grateful. I'm eternally grateful for our teachers and our staff who are providing the high-quality programs that is demonstrating exceptional student growth. So I guess I will just conclude by giving one more thank you to the community for this referendum because we know the impact it's having on our students and our families. At that time, I'll say thank you and then see if there are any questions.
Got one quick question. Do we know what percent of our pre-K four-year-olds last year matriculated into MCCSC kindergarten?
We do. It's about, um, I don't remember exactly what it's between eighty-five and ninety-five percent of our students have continued with us moving from pre-K to kindergarten.
And the ones that didn't, did they go somewhere else within our community or did they move?
Some of them actually chose to, they really enjoyed early learning, but they wanted to be homeschooled for, for kindergarten or they moved. But most of them, um, the ones I've talked with, continued on with us. Great question.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Dowling. Oh, you're up again. You're just gonna stay. Okay, I'm like, you're staying. Is there something you'd like to say? I'm looking, I'm reading my notes, like, what's up next? Okay, take it away. We are now in our last, uh, redistricting. Here we go.
Yeah, so I'm excited to provide an update on our redistricting study and our commission. Next topic, I'm going to talk about a commission dashboard that we've been using. Uh, and I'll talk about Dr. Baiton, who created that dashboard, uh, with our commission and how we've been using that. I'll talk about, um, how we continue to study redistricting scenarios. And we've had even more robust data to our approach, and I'll, those are the things I want to highlight, including next steps. I always like to talk about our project charter because it defines the scope of our work. Our project charter purpose is to study redistricting as a mechanism to balance socioeconomic status across our schools when considering cost effectiveness of both current and redistricted models. Our charter includes our goals and metrics and what, how we define success. Our commission is, uh, focused on finding, uh, considerations to achieve improved socioeconomic status balance, to get a better understanding of that. We want to get a better understanding of the factors that inform cost effectiveness of our buildings. We, of course, want to have a primary focus on the impact of these things that we're studying on our students and our families. And of course, there's important data that we continue to study, including building utilization rates and demographic trends and those impacts they will have on our building utilization. Uh, the recent redistricting study timeline, we continue to study, at this time, elementary scenarios to see what insights we can get about the board considerations and our community, uh, board priorities and community considerations. We will then shift to looking, uh, at secondary scenarios, including at the middle and high school level. And then, uh, in, uh, spring, we anticipate sharing a board, a report with the board and the community that will summarize the insights that we have gained through, throughout the commission's work. Just really want to kind of share, get into the details a little bit about the commission's work. We were working on evaluating redistricting scenarios using some really important data that we got from a devographer, Preston Smith, that was really helpful in getting us started. The data that we had from him included enrollment, building capacities. We added some geographic proximity, and we were really focused on looking at socioeconomic status through using free and reduced lunch rates. We found that really helpful, but from the very beginning, we're working with commission members, they wanted more data, they wanted more robust data, and I think that was a really important ask. So we've been able to, with the work, work of Dr. Baiton, who I will introduce shortly, really able to add in some data through our approach. That included US Census data and county survey data. So now that we had the data we're using and with the data dashboard created by Dr. Baiton, we've been able to have an even more bu, robust approach to studying maps. We have an interactive tool that we, uh, have now are using to study, um, redistricting scenarios, to gain those insights that, that we're, that we're seeking. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Baiton. He will talk more about the data dashboard that he has created. He is a GS, GIS coordinator and very importantly, a commission member. And he's been working with myself and Dr. Garma McLean to create those maps that we've been studying as a commission.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, everybody. Uh, yeah, so I'm John Baiton, uh, working in Monroe County Surveyors Office, GIS Coordinator for Monroe County. Um, yeah, this has been like a really fulfilling process to be part of. Um, I have kids in MCCSC, and so, uh, public school is our, uh, foundation of our, our democracy, and I also think for, you know, for our community. So whatever is good for MCCSC is also good for Monroe County in large. This is, there we go, yeah. So, uh, Tim mentioned that I've been creating this, but it's been a collaborative effort between Tim, Blaine, myself, and the rest of the commission, um, to actually create these dashboards. Um, as Tim mentioned, some of the data we were looking at to begin with for SES was looking mainly at free and reduced lunch rates. What we brought in were some different metrics, and some of this was parcel data. Um, so looking at kind of the average assessed value of parcels, number of address points within parcels, to get a better idea of kind of what would the composition of current attendance zones are. Um, there's a QR code on here that you can access to look at the dashboard. This is configured for both mobile and desktop. I would say that the desktop functionality is a little bit more robust with some more kind of bells and whistles. So the, the parcel analysis gives us a good idea of the current kind of attendance zones, those ones that currently we're using for MCCSC. And again, it's, it's kind of that compensation of the residential use type, thinking that a single-family parcel probably equates to a higher SES metric than, say, an apartment complex or a commercial housing, which would be a rental unit. Uh, we also brought in data from the US Census, and now the census occurs de, in every decade. But there's also something that comes out that's called the American Community Survey, and what this is, is almost like an aggregate value of kind of more in-depth, um, qualitative questions that might be asked to census takers. Um, the two thousand and twenty census, as I'm assuming a lot of you know, was wrought with errors and, and issues. Um, there were questions in the census that were, uh, inappropriate, and shouldn't have been asked in the first place. It was also took place during COVID, so there was a, a lower kind of count that we'd be getting. The ACS data, however, is a, um, kind of a, a, a composition of data from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three, so it's a five-year average. And this has information about things like access to vehicles, um, uh, educational attainment at a census block group level or a census track level. Um, so we were able to bring that in as well. Now, some of the challenges that we encountered with this is that the current attendance zones, um, were drawn, I believe, around two thousand and six? Two thousand and five? And when they were drawn, they weren't really following any type of authoritative geography. What I mean, what I mean by an authoritative geography is actually using a established reference point to build off of. And so we're now beginning to look at using census data, census block data, or that geometry of the census to shape kind of these, these attendance zones, to give us a better idea of who is there and also moving forward, who's going to be there in, in the future. So those are some of the things, um, that we're kind of looking at. I think I've kind of probably already gotten into some of these limitations. Um, again, these census tracks are not aligning with the attendance zones, and so what we might have here would be, I believe that's Lakeview Attendance Zone. It, 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 it crosses something like four or five different census tracks. And so you get these kind of weird values when you're trying to, uh, get a, a, an actual number of what's going on within these, these different groups. Again, what we're doing today now is, is looking at using census block group geometry as that authoritative data moving forward to shape these, um, these new attendance zones. And it's, like I said, it's been a really fulfilling exercise and a process, working with the commission, working with, uh, Tim and Blaine, uh, throughout this. Um, I think that's probably all I have.
So, yeah, just to conclude, as John mentioned, uh, we've been able to create these example scenarios for study um, at the census block level, and we have our data with the data that John has brought, has allowed us to really bring a lot of robust table to these um, scenarios that we're studying and allowing us as a commission to gain insights about what we can learn about the board priorities and the community considerations through the, through studying these example scenarios. Just to finish, uh, talking about our timeline, we're continuing to study these elementary scenarios to see what we can learn. We'll then certainly look at the secondary scenarios and what we can, insights we can gain by studying those maps as a commission. And then we will conclude, uh, the commission by sharing a report, summarizing the things that we've learned, and share with the board for consideration and with the public. Thank you. And are there any questions? I'm sure Dr. Baiton would be happy to take questions. He can certainly handle the technical ones because I'll definitely refer him on those ones, yeah.
Questions from the board or comments?
I have a couple of questions, and also, thank you, Dr. Baiton. This, this sounds like, um, really valuable in this process, so thanks for your help with this. Um, this question might be premature, but has adding in those other considerations beyond free and reduced lunch changed, uh, significantly changed your understanding of the socioeconomic balance between our elementary schools?
I don't know if it's changed that. It's helped us, you know, the, for example, the, um, one of the community considerations is about building, building utilization and, and so that, that is something that I'd see kind of goes together, um, and thus, it allows us to study that one alongside balancing SES. So I, I wouldn't say that, I would just say it just allowed us to get more insight about a variety of things at the same time by adding the community consideration. Does that answer your question?
It does. Yeah, it does. It, sorry, that was loud. Um, thank you. It does. Uh, I'm enthusiastic. Uh, I, my other question is, um, uh, is maybe sadder. Uh, so as you're considering cost effectiveness, has your team at all looked to see whether other school districts that have gone through redistricting have had a significant loss in attendance or whether it might impact our ability to pass a referendum?
Well, the first one I can address, the second one we haven't looked at, so I, I couldn't give that a truthful answer because we haven't studied that one. But as a commission, we've looked at, um, Dr. Garma McLean has shared research with both me and with, and we've shared with the commission that it's, that it's a very low percentage rate of students who do choose. I know it, it's talked about, but a lot of the research we show is that you retain between ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent of your students.
Thank you. That's great news. Yeah, I think that's really good news and sort of what I had seen as well. Or sometimes you see a little dip and then a bounce back in subsequent years. I do just want to say thank you so much, Dr. Baiton, for that, this amazing work. I think that this is an example of the best kind of collaboration between community and, um, a, a, a school corporation or an entity like this, an organization. Um, and I'm just really grateful, Dr. Dowling, for your leadership in this, in this work and for the commission, who, that's made up of so many community individuals who've invested so much time in this. I, you know, I think we started this process, it's been a while now, right? And it's gone through multiple iterations of, of how to proceed, when to proceed, what is the answer? And, and I think that, you know, i, i, this too is an answer of, okay, I'm going to say this. So where I work at Blanchard, it's a leadership development company, and our CEO, Scott Blanchard, has sort of coined this first pancake term. And his notion is that, like, the first pancake is always the crappy pancake, you know? It's like, you have to, like, test it and it's like burnt, or it's like not cooked enough, or it's misshapen. It's like, there's always something wrong with the first pancake, but the first pancake is necessary for every other pancake after it, right? And so I think this is a really, really good example of a first pancake, right? That, that came before the board or that the board put out there, or I think it was actually brought to us in a particular way. But I think we've moved beyond the first pancake, right? And we, the, the testament, I think, here is that not only did we have a board that was willing to come back to the drawing table over and over and actually did listen to its public and its commenters and say, okay, we're hearing you, let's do this, let's try this, let's move here, let's investigate this. And I think we've landed in this really beautiful process now, right? Of, of this amazing collaboration that is obviously enriching the process and I think the people in it. And so I'm just, want to say thank you to all of you for that work.
Yeah, I'd like to just add my thank you too. We have nearly ninety-two commission members who signed up, who attended now seven meetings with more meetings planned, and they continue to come and they continue to offer their input. And we have commission members like John, who's at the level of expertise that's brought so much with his dashboard and with the interactive tool that we're using for these maps that we're studying. It's been, it's been a really amazing experience, and I really appreciate all the commemor, commission members' time that they've given to the, to the commission.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. No, I, I'm a step ahead. I have like final thoughts.
Oh, yeah. Anybody else have questions or comments? All right, take it away, final thoughts.
Oh, uh, okay.
Can you need a stall for you?
No, no, I, I think I have them collected. Um, I just, um, you know, I, it's easy to get down in public education right now because of all the challenges, especially, um, in our state at the moment. But I've been just reflecting on all of the other ways in which our corporation is so rich. You know, uh, we talked earlier about the partnership with MCEA, the retired administrators who are willing to come back and fill in when we need them, the, um, partnerships Mr. Irwin mentioned when we were talking about contracts, the partnerships that we have with community organizations, and then community members who will step forward and, um, and help us answer questions, as well as, uh, we've, you know, the, the thank you that we keep repeating because it's so important to our voters for supporting our referendum. And so, um, even though I, I, like I said, we've had so many meetings with hard conversations, I'm, I think I'm leaving here tonight just really grateful for how fortunate we are in this corporation to have so much support.
Thank you, Dr. Dowling. We appreciate it. We now move on to comments and committee reports. Does the board have any comments or reports you'd like to share? Seeing none, we will move right along, um, to the superintendent comments and report, Dr. Winston.
Yes, I just have a, a couple of to share. First of all, I just want to mention and a friendly reminder that, uh, Friday is October thirty-first. And I want to remind those that are driving during that time period that, uh, during trick-or-treat hours, to be aware of our children who are walking and crossing the roads, we want to make sure that everyone has a safe and enjoyable time. I also want to make sure that our families are aware that on Tuesday, November fourth, we do not have school. Um, it's generally closed for Election Day on that day, whether it's, there's election held or not held. But for us, it is a professional learning day for our educators, and it's a very important time, and our students will return on Wednesday, November the fifth. I'm very excited to share with you that Pat Wilson, a retired teacher from Bloomington High School North, is going to be honored, um, with the, at the Rotary Toast. She's a longtime MCCSC teacher, and she is the founder of the Bloomington High School North Habitat for Humanity Student Affiliate, affiliate, and she's going to be honored next Friday, November seventh, um, at the Eleventh Annual Rotary Toast at Ivy Tech's Shreve Hall. Ms. Wilson's contributions to the Bloomington community, MCCSC, and IU have been widely recognized at the national, the state, as well as the local levels. Tickets for this event are still available, um, at RotaryToast.com. Fifty percent of the proceeds will benefit the Bloomington North Habitat for Humanity chapter, while the other fifty percent will benefit Rotary Club, um, efforts for nonprofits in Monroe County. So please, if you are available, um, make sure to, to take a moment to, to honor and, and help us celebrate, uh, Pat Wilson. I think one of the main topics of conversations from early, early this morning or late last night, depending upon your perspective, has to do with Bloomington High School North graduate Will Klein. What an amazing, amazing opportunity and experience. In his two thousand and twenty-five World Series debut, Bloomington High School North graduate Will Klein pitched four scoreless innings in the World Series. Uh, he recorded five strikeouts, and he was credited with the win after the Dodgers secured a walk-off victory in the eighteenth inning of game three. His performance was a career-long outing and came in a high-pressure situation with the bullpen, bullpen depleted. His mother teaches for us here at Fairview Elementary, for those of you who did not know. But he pitched four innings, five strikeouts, two hits, one walk, zero-point-zero ERA, and he got the win. So anyway, so just a celebration for another continued example of excellence at MCCSC, which is, which is what we all recognize. So can we just give Will a round of applause? And of course, I, I would be, um, remiss if I didn't say that, uh, Dr. Henderson- And of course, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that Dr. Henderson was his principal. A couple of other things I just want to mention. Fall sports are winding down. We have a number of fall sporting events, too many to go through. But on Friday, we have our football sectionals. South plays at home against Tara Hought South, and North plays at home against Tara Hought North. Okay, yes, they coordinated that. On Saturday, November first, our cross-country state finals for boys and girls. North and South will both have student representatives participating. And last night, Hoosier Hills Career Center hosted its College and Career Pathway Fair. It was standing room only. I couldn't even find a place to park, and someone said, couldn't you just park illegally? And I said, yeah, I probably could have, but I didn't want to get towed. But it was a wonderful event and a shout-out to Christine Reitzman and her team for, for hosting that. And this past Saturday, at the community farmer's market, a celebrating friendship event was held where the musical event was held on the steps of Bloomington City Hall, and it featured singers from several MCCSC elementary schools, including Benford, Clear Creek, Fairview, Marlin, Summit, Templeton, and University Elementary. Very exciting. In the area of musical and performing arts, there are too many events to highlight for you, but hopefully you saw the newsletter that came out on Friday from our communications department highlighting all of the performances across our high schools, across elementary and middle schools, our winter performances, our fest, coral festivals, everything. And so I, I think it's really important to continue to celebrate the arts. That's something that we also do exceedingly well and want to give a shout-out. And I would like to just kind of conclude by making sure that everybody had a chance to receive our inaugural MCCSC newspaper. I think we might have some in the back that would be available for folks if you didn't get one. Personally, I have not yet received mine in the mail yet, so I'm, I'm hoping that I will get one. But in the case I don't, I've got this one. And I, I just want to say a shout-out to all of our schools that are represented in here. Our effort, our hope, and, and part of the goal and priority of, of our board has been to make sure that we are telling our stories, that we are celebrating the excellence that we have been accustomed to day in and day out. And this is just one example of our attempt to, to celebrate the excellence of our students and to celebrate the excellence of our staff members. And hopefully you found it to be good reading and informative, and certainly share a copy with a, a friend of yours. And I would just conclude by saying, we could not have done this without the direction, the leadership, the guidance, and the expertise of Mrs. Sarah Dewis. And so thank you so much, Sarah, for all of the time and energy and effort that you've put into this over the last several months in helping us to tell our own stories. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. Yes, thank you, Sarah, very much for your work on this. But also, I think on so many other pieces of communication in this district, I think a lot of times people think about the communication as the crisis communication and the, the sort of weekly letters that go out just saying, you know, like, here's what's coming or whatever. But I think it really is so important to tell our stories, and I think that we have seen a really, you know, beautiful uptick in the way that our student stories get told since you've been in the district. So I appreciate that so much. All right. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, November eighteenth, 2025, and we are adjourned.